Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Thursday, September 3rd, 2020. I would like to call the Pittsburgh City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. Counselor Squalia, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Squalia. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
The following councilors have logged in and are present at tonight's meeting. President Kishmeric, Counselor Boishman, Counselor Kutcher, Counselor Deena Tally, Counselor Green, Counselor Schultz, Counselor Squalia, Counselor Van Hazinga, Counselor Walsh, and Counselor Zarella.
Counselor Zarella with a motion relative to suspension of the rules.
A motion for suspension of the rule of all rules of this body or of our parliamentary authority that are inconsistent with either the remote participation format or the guidance issued by the state relative to remote participation during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
I have a motion and second. This will be done by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kishmeric.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher.
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally. Counselor Deena Tally.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Public forum. The public has been advised to contact the clerk's office by noon today regarding any comments of not more than two minutes, and none have been brought to the clerk's attention. That said, we have one department head who is also joining us this evening. We have Chief Martineau, who I believe is requesting suspension of the rules. This time, I'd like to welcome the chief to come before us. Chief, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening, councilors. Good evening. Thank you, councilors. I'd like to address Order Number 17920 and 18020 and ask the possibility to suspend the rules to address these two matters this evening.
Move for suspension of 17920 and 18020.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. This will be done by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kishmeric.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher.
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. The first order, 17920, is a grant that the Pittsburgh Police Department received from the federal government, the Railroad Policy Development Division. It's a grant that we looked at back in the beginning of the year, back in January, and we were looking for ways that we could improve the area between the First Street Road area and up to the River Street area around the railroad tracks. And we were thinking about, you know, as we progress towards the rail trail system that will be coming down there in the not-so-far future, this will be a great opportunity for our police officers to get down there and provide some enforcement opportunities, but more importantly, some education on the safety of being near an active rail trail. And we were very fortunate that we received a grant in the amount of $7,500 this year. That will go towards mobilization deployments, specifically in that general area that I described.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 17920. Speaking on the motion, unless there is objection from the council, we'll adopt by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is so adopted.
Thank you. The second order I'd like to address this evening is 180-20. This is a reoccurring grant that comes out of the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety. It's our main state 911 grant. As you see the figure this year, it's 174,594. That's a significant jump from previous years. Typically, we receive somewhere in the range of $125,000 to $135,000 a year to assist us in our 911 operation. This figure is basically calculated on calls for service within the city, and this came at a good time this year to get an extra $40,000 to assist us in the 911 department. This money will go towards funding our 911 emergency dispatches. And like I said, this year in particular, we were very excited to get a $40,000 increase in that line item.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Green, you have the floor.
Thank you. Chief, I just wanted to know, in your opinion, and with the census being collected for this year, even though we supposedly only have 40-plus-thousand residents in our community, I think that we all could agree that we probably know that that figure is probably a lot more than that, probably at least $10,000 more residents than what had been reported from 10 years ago. Is that... Is the 40,000 additional dollars, do you think that we could count on that, knowing that our population is ever increasing, or do you think this is like a one-time deal to have that much money granted to us?
I think it would be irresponsible on my part to suggest that we're going to receive this every year. When I formulate my budget in a normal year, we take a look at the average of what we received for the last five years, and that's what I usually put in. A great example is FY19, I believe. I believe my original budget anticipated 115 from the 911 group, and we ended up getting 135. So I'd like to err on the side of caution always on that because we just don't know year to year. And this year, because we were a little bit later getting to this position, I was able, now I'm able to announce that we're getting 174, almost 175K. So it's great for this year, but we can never count on it year to year.
Are our 911 calls that you're receiving, is the volume going up?
It's increased steadily over the last five years. We're averaging anywhere between 55,000 and 60,000 calls a year for service, and that's being handled by 77 police officers.
Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you. I'm done.
Counselor Squalia, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Chief, you mentioned an increase of calls for service may have affected the value, the additional 40,000 or so. Is that calls for service to the Pittsburgh Police Department, non-emergency line, and 911, or is it a combination, or is it only for 911 calls?
No, it's a combination, Counselor, 911 and general calls for service. This year, the governor fully funded plus on 911. So that, in part, by the governor fully funding it and adding a little bit extra to it, that's part of the reason for the increase, but also a significant factor goes into the amount of calls for service. And like I said, it's not specifically 911 calls for service. It's generated calls for service that come in.
So if residents have a legitimate issue where they need to contact the police department, they are urged to contact the police department for service because, instead of letting things kind of fester and go, because we do get funding.
Absolutely. That's always been my policy. You called it the police department for any issues you have. It's an emergency. It's simple. You pick up 911, and I have three dispatches working 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Thank you. One other thing, it notes, so we're getting this additional approximately 40,000, but we don't know if we'll get it, we can rely on it. So are we using this to, it says repair and enhancement? Is there any particular repair or enhancement that you have planned for this grant?
Not this year. It's an option that I have through 911 and EOPS that I can take part of it to handle repairs. This year, quite frankly, I need as much as I can get in my operating budget to offset costs. My line item for dispatches is roughly $515,000. So this helps offset a considerable amount of that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Zarella, I saw your hand up earlier.
Oh, I was just going to raise a technical point. We should probably rescind the motion before taking questions, but it wasn't a big enough deal to raise a point of order, so.
Understood. Thank you, Counselor. I have a motion and second on the floor. Unless there is objection, we will adopt 18020 by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is adopted. Thank you very much, Chief, for coming before us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilors, good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good night, Chief.
Next, we'll hear a report from the Committee on Records. Counselor Squalia.
We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt and accept the report from the Committee on Records. Unless there is any objection from councilors, we'll adopt by unanimous consent. Seeing no objections, it is adopted. Next, we have communications from His Honor, the Mayor. We have two letters of appointments before us this evening. First, from Michelle Marino, as the Veterans Service Commissioner, term to expire on October 1st, 2023. That is a reappointment. And Charles A. Colburn III and Ryan J. Major as permanent full-time firefighters for the city of Pittsburgh. Both will be sent to the Appointments Committee on Tuesday, September 15th. Unless there is objection, we'll adopt by unanimous consent. They stand.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Boishman.
I'd like to put the number two, Charles Crowberg and Ryan Majors, on hold for now until we do it after the budget.
Counselor, that is actually according to our rules, we cannot hold appointments. They must be referred directly to appointments and held at the very next opportunity for the Appointments Committee before our next meeting. So for that reason, we have to send that to the Appointments Committee.
All right.
Next, we have the third letter of communication from His Honor, the Mayor, is a promotion of acting Lieutenant Patrick G. Haverty to permanent fire lieutenant and Private Jude A. Lambert to temporary lieutenant effective Monday, September 7th, 2020. This will simply be placed on file, and no action is required of this body. Next, we have a communication from Chief Ernest Martineau of the Pittsburgh Police Department. And, Counselors, I'm going to read this communication from him. It's a bit lengthy, so bear with me, Counselors. Honorable Mayor Stephen L. Deena Tally, Mayor, City of Pittsburgh, and honorable City Council members. As Chief of Police for the City of Pittsburgh and as a resident of the city, I feel a need and obligation to respond to the continued cries calling for the divestment of funds from police and the reinvestment of those funds into our community. You and other local elected officials have been receiving a cut-and-paste response to divest resources from your police department and to reinvest them in your community. I would contend that a fully funded police department is an investment in the community and one which will pay dividends to the people of Pittsburgh. Your continued encouragement and direction in the face of the current outcry is much appreciated by the men and women of the Pittsburgh Police Department who tirelessly serve the people of our community. The Pittsburgh Police Department once employed 96 officers, while today we have a complement of only 79 sworn officers. Despite not having the resources once available, the officers of the Pittsburgh Police Department continue to make daily investments in our community. Faced with the daily uncertainty during the COVID-19 pandemic, your officers have reported for duty every day, putting the needs of our citizens first without regard for their own personal safety. In 2015, President Barack Obama's task force on the 21st Century Policing developed what is considered to be a transformational campaign. Law enforcement was given the final report to use as a guide for the future development of policing. Trust between law enforcement and the people they protect and serve is essential. Law enforcement leaders were given the following six pillars designed to achieve this trust: building trust in legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, training and education, and officer wellness and safety. The Pittsburgh Police Department embraced the challenge set forth in the President's report. The policies and practices are evident in the daily interactions with your police department. Sound policy and standards are in place and embedded in the day-to-day operations of the Pittsburgh Police Department. Strong supervision and oversight result in the implementation of sound policy and standards. A commitment to community policing is making community engagement the norm, not the exception. Our robust jail diversion program is focused on early intervention, community outreach, and solutions beyond incarceration. Police officers are trained on how to recognize implicit bias and respond with fair and impartial policing. Highly-trained police officers are equipped with de-escalating skills and advanced training in crisis intervention. Dedicated school resource officers are forging lasting relationships with the city's youth. The resource officers are involved in various youth programs, including the Junior Police Academy, PAL, summer programs, and coaching, while, all while ensuring a safe environment to learn. The members of the Pittsburgh Police Department are dedicated to making Pittsburgh a better place to call home. I am proud of the officers who, despite the controversy and almost daily assaults by the media and anti-policing organizations, report to work day in and day out to safeguard the citizens of Pittsburgh. To the concerned residents who are sharing this mass mailing and demanding the Pittsburgh Police Department do certain things, I share the following. Duty to intervene has been woven into the policies of the Pittsburgh Police Department for years. Training and de-escalation, procedural justice, and bias-based policing are the norm and not the exception. All forms of neck restraint have been banned by policy and are not part of our police training for decades. Your police department does not engage in the practice of utilizing tear gas and other military-style tactics as asserted. The members of the department have diligently worked side by side with community and spiritual leaders to forge friendships and partnerships that provide, that protect the citizens of our great city. I will be the first to say that we have room to improve and that no one person or profession is without fault. After witnessing George Floyd's death, I was outraged. The police officers' actions were depraved, indifferent, and senseless. That was an unlawful killing. Now is the time to listen, accept criticism, and make change where needed. I am willing to implement change. However, we must choose change carefully and implement that change critically, not succumb to a knee-jerk reaction implementing what appears to be a quick solution. Our mission is to protect and serve the citizens of Pittsburgh. To be successful in that mission, we must engage the help and support of all of our community members. We must ensure that Pittsburgh remains safe and that we emerge stronger as one multicultural community. Now is not the time for divesting in policing. It is a time to invest, not only in policing, but in humanity. One cannot happen without the other, and I am optimistic for a transformational change is at hand. Respectfully submitted, Ernest Martineau, Chief of Police. Counselors, that will be placed on file in the city clerk's office. Thank you to the chief for submitting that to this body. We also have one additional communication from the Penmanship Reserve Investment Management Board, which will also be placed on file in the city clerk's office. Next, we have reports from committees. City Property Committee Oral Report Meeting of July 28th, 2020. Counselor Zarella.
Thank you. We had only one actual item on the agenda. We still have 04620 on the table, and I actually do not have the record in front of me, but to the best of my recollection, and correct me if I'm wrong, any of my fellow committee members, we unanimously approved 15920 to accept a deed in lieu for Zero Merrill Street.
Do I have a motion from?
Motion to accept the committee's report?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the City Property Committee Oral Report. Speaking on the motion, there is no objection. We will adopt by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is adopted. Next, we have a Public Works Committee Report Meeting of July 28th, 2020. Counselors, there's about a page of items, and our chair is actually not, could not be with us this evening.
Motion to accept the committee's report?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Works Committee Report. Speaking on the motion, I see nobody speaking, and if there is no objection, we will adopt by unanimous consent. Seeing none, we will adopt the City Public Works Committee Oral Report. Next, we have public hearings, the City of Pittsburgh Municipal Aggregation Plan. We have a slideshow, I believe, that we'll be bringing up. I would like to ask that Mr. O'Rourke, who is joining us, as well as A.J. Terigney, Chief of Staff, and I will hand the floor over to those gentlemen to take us through the process.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councilors. It's been a long time for you to do all. With me this evening is John O'Rourke with Good Energy. He's an energy specialist. He's been in the field for quite some time and also a Marine, so I'd like to thank him for his service as well. As you maybe recall, councilors, almost a year ago, well over a year ago, we started the process of municipal aggregation. This public hearing is one step of a several-step process to engage in that aggregation plan, and I'm going to let Mr. O'Rourke expand on that.
Before he does, I will just declare, I will declare the public hearing now open, and those representatives, I will now turn the floor back over to them.
Thank you, Mr. President. And then, in addition to this public hearing, we did receive two pieces of public comment, written public comment, that I submitted to your body and is part of your packet. And from there, I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Rourke.
Thank you, A.J. Thank you, Mr. President, councilors, and Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to appear before you tonight for this public hearing for municipal aggregation. I submitted a short slideshow to you that just outlines, first, the history behind the Pittsburgh Municipal Aggregation. It started with a council vote on May 7th, 2019. That was a unanimous vote to move forward with municipal aggregation. On November 26, 2019, the city issued an RFP. It was number 20-001-S for Community Aggregation Consulting Services. On February 10th, 2020, the city selected Good Energy LP to provide the CCA consulting services. From that date through July 6th, with the guidance of municipal officials, we developed a municipal aggregation plan. On July 21st through today, September 3rd, the city scheduled a public review period for residents to comment on the municipal aggregation plan with the public hearing here tonight. The other two slides in this presentation basically refer to some information about Good Energy. That's the second slide, the fact that the plan has been available on the Pittsburgh city website, at the mayor's office, at the library, and at Strong Style Coffee for residents to review and to make comments on. The plan is a very simple plan. The default product in the plan has the same amount of renewable energy as is required by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The options are two options, one that has 5% more, and for those who really want to go green, 100% more green energy. The place we're at now, we had Department of Public Utilities, I'm sorry, the Department of Energy Resources conducted a review of the plan and had consultation call with A.J. and Mary Delaney on the 27th of August. DOER determined that the municipal aggregation plan was in compliance with Massachusetts General Law 164, Section 134A. The DOER, we were expecting some time before they issued a consultation letter, but it was the very next day that they sent out a letter to the mayor indicating that the plan was in compliance. Essentially, any written comments and any oral comments given tonight will become part of the plan and will be submitted to the Department of Public Utilities. The Department of Public Utilities is the approving body, and essentially, it usually takes them six to eight months to approve plans. Hopefully, they go a little bit faster because the Pittsburgh plan is under a new format for the Department of Public Utilities, and hopefully, they get through it a little faster. Any questions on the process?
And, Counselors, I'll just point out, if you're looking for it in your packet, the public comments are available, beginning on page 30 of your packet, continuing through page 37.
Mr. President.
Keith Pendergast, and I'll bring this up again during the public comment portion of this public hearing, but from Keith Pendergast and from Jaclyn Waite. Mr. O'Rourke, the floor is back to yours.
And, Mr. President, I forgot to mention, I apologize. I also want to recognize, as John did, our chief procurement officer, who's been very instrumental in this process, and of course, the mayor, who's had this part of his plan for the city of Pittsburgh to help defray as much cost as possible to our citizens.
Anything further from the two of you before I turn this over to councilors for questions or comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
That said, questions and comments from councilors. We have, first, in one moment, we have Counselor Squalia looking to speak. Counselor, the floor is yours.
Was it Counselor Boishman, or am I?
I believe that was previous. That was 716. Counselor Boishman, are you also looking for the floor?
After. I want to hear what's going on first.
Okay, understood.
I had a question that was largely based on Mr. Pendergrass's public comment regarding our renewable energy kind of options. And, you know, his point was to make kind of an opt-out version as the lesser renewable energy option and full opt-in for your premium 100% local green. Can you talk about what an average bill would look like for the, for, you know, the step up, the 5% renewable, and then the 100% local green, kind of what an average bill would, what that would increase?
Counselor, essentially, the plan was constructed so that the least expensive option was the default, and then the 5% was an option, and so was the 100%. I had responded to Mr. Pendergrass's email, and essentially, basically, I told him that this is the best way for the program to start, and upon renewal, if you wanted to make any changes to your default product, once people got used to the program, that would be the place to do it. Essentially, the difference between the basic and the 5% depends on the price of your Class 1 RECs at the time that you go out to bid. That can range anywhere from a half to a penny per kilowatt hour. It's not a big difference, but again, the mayor was looking for the least expensive alternative for the citizens of Pittsburgh on the first go-around. We can always make changes to the plan as you move forward in the next renewal.
Thank you. Can you relay the half cent or one cent per kilowatt to like a typical bill? You know, is it an additional, maybe $20 a month to do all, you know, depending on the REC, renewable energy credit cost? I don't know. Is there a range for your typical customer that we could?
Your typical bill is about 7,500 kilowatts, kilowatt-hours a year. Okay, so an additional penny or an additional half cent does not add a lot to that bill. Okay, essentially, an additional penny would add. Okay, essentially, an additional penny would add, let's see, let me put that on here for you. About $75 a year.
And that's for the full 100% renewable option?
No, just for the 5%.
And what's approximately the increase for the 100% renewable?
All right, that, right now, the range for that is, is anywhere from 2.5 to 3 cents difference. So now you're talking about?
180, $200?
200.
50 to 225.
25, about 200 to 225, right in there.
Okay, all right. It's so, so residents at home will, we, we'll automatically start with the, the basic version, the minimum per the state, and then we can opt into 5% or we can opt into 100%.
That's correct, councilor.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Green, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Mr. O'Rourke, in the, in the writing of this, where it mentions eligible electricity consumers not already enrolled with a competitive electric supplier would be automatically enrolled in our aggregation program. What exactly does that mean? Does that mean that everybody who currently receives Unitil as their electric supplier is automatically going to be converted over to green energy?
Essentially, they would be converted to the default, which only has as much green energy as is, is required by the state. But essentially, the process that we go through for that is a 30-day opt-out period where people don't have to join the program. So essentially, anyone on the basic service of Unitil who does not opt out of the program in that 30-day opt-out period is automatically put into it. Essentially, there is, there is plenty of information given out before that time so that people understand exactly what's going on.
And my other question is, how long, how long is the longest term that you allow consumers to buy in at? You know, do you guarantee your rate when they opt in for six months, 12 months, two years, three years? What's the longest period of time? If we choose to go with your default program, what's the longest period of time we can set that default charge for? What's the commitment?
Time of the competitive bid. We receive bids from competitive suppliers for 12 months, 18 months, 24 months, 30 months, 36 months. At that point in time, the municipal officials for the city will decide which term length they want to, to sign up for. Okay, it could be anywhere from 12 months to 36 months. In the most recent bids that we've done, the sweet spot has been 30 to 36 months. What is going to be in the market when we go out to bid for Pittsburgh? But recently, the longer term has been the best pricing.
And if we have consumers that choose not to, who, who for one reason or another get behind on their electric portion of their utility bill, what is your, what is your payment process collection look like?
We don't handle any of that. That's handled by Unitil.
So the billing?
Now, it will continue.
Billing would continue to be, or?
You will still, you will still get a, a bill from Unitil. The only difference on that bill will be the name of the supplier. That's the only difference in the bill. Unitil services the account, they service the infrastructure, they service everything, delivery. The only change is in the supply and where that comes from.
So the utility pools will still be owned by Unitil?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Dean Natale, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Mr. O'Rourke, the, can you go through the process quickly of, if we were to adopt this plan, what are the next steps? You mentioned earlier about the residents, the ratepayers getting a bevy of information. So what, what happens once this plan is enacted? Are they going to get something through direct mail? Who's that going to be sent from? Giving them, essentially, what we're talking about right now in terms of expenses and whatever they wish to choose, and the 30-day opt-out so they can be aware of the, the fact that they have a choice to make? Because, because what I fear here is that we're going to get a lot of people who are not going to know during that 30-day period what's going on. And after the 30 days, when they get their bill and they see an increase, or they, they see something on it, they're going to go, what, what is this? So I'm concerned that, because it's happened a lot, and, and it's happened a lot, and this isn't just relegated to Pittsburgh, that no matter how much information we put out there, there is going to be a, a group of people, enough so, where they're just, they're either not going to get it or they may have accidentally threw it out. I mean, so can you just explain what the process is once this is enacted? Where are the informations coming from? What they're going to receive, how they're going to receive it, and, and the like?
Yes, councilor. The next step here in this process is that the, the aggregation documents will be submitted to the Department of Public Utilities. They will go through an approval process, which includes a public hearing as well. That takes six to eight months. Okay, so you're not going to go to bid for at least six months, if not eight months. All right, during that period, there will be a ramped-up process of public outreach and education. It'll start with some press releases so that people know what's coming. We'll have information to be handed out in your municipal offices. As we get closer to the time where that 30-day opt-out period comes into play, that process gets ramped up. For 30 to 45 days before that, we have public meetings. We meet with your senior citizens. We meet with local groups, civic groups if they want. Again, we have a website that goes up that they can go to, and there's plenty of frequently asked questions on that website. We try to do whatever we can through multiple channels to get this word out. Unfortunately, you're always going to have a small group of people that when you come down to the end, either did not get the word or did not understand, okay? And they're, they're going to, there's going to be some confusion. But essentially, we reach out to people in, in all the channels we can. We do an interview with your local access television station. During that, in that 30-day period, every eligible customer will get a customer notification letter, which explains the whole program and gives them the opportunity to either come into the program by not taking any action or to, to send in an opt-out card if they don't wish to.
And who is that sent by? Is that sent by you? Who's that notification gets?
Yeah, we, we take care of that.
Okay.
It's sent out under the auspices of the city, but we take care of that, and the, and the competitive supplier sends that out. And that goes to every eligible consumer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Councilor Boishman. The floor is yours.
Sure, question for you. So everybody's going to be on it. What's the period, how long you had to opt out? Is it after 180 days or what?
Well, the, the official opt-out period that the, is required by the Department of Public Utilities is 30 days. However, however, at any point after that, if anybody wants to opt out, they can opt out without penalty or termination fee.
So if Boishman's in there for two years, he can opt out anytime and not pay any kind of penalties?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, you just said, so all you're doing is supplying the electricity, a renewable energy. So I'm still going to get charges, transmission charge, transit charges, all that from Unitil for their services, right?
Yeah, there's two parts of the bill. There's the transmission part, and there's the supply part. Everything that you see on the transmission part now will continue. And essentially, we won't go out to bid for you unless we can get a lower price on the supply side than Unitil is charging. So when we go out to bid, and we've, we've held, we've held some municipalities up for as long as 18 months because the market wasn't good, we want to make sure that when we go out to bid, it's competitive and that you're getting a lower price than the basic service for Unitil.
All right. Now, my question to you, is it going to cost the city any money at all?
No money from the city.
None, none whatsoever?
Whatsoever, all the expenses borne by us.
Anything further, Councilor Boishman?
I said?
Anything further?
No, that's okay for now.
Next, we have Councilor Van Hozenga. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. O'Rourke, so the primary purpose of going through this process is to save the ratepayers' money in their logical bill. So it sounds like principally that will be done through being able to purchase electricity cheaper than Unitil, is that correct?
It's the objective, yes. And, and one of the advantages we have is that we can go out to bid at strategic points in the market, whereas Unitil has to buy at two specific times of the year. 50% of their load for a year, two times a year, whether the market is good or not. So essentially, in Massachusetts, right now, we have 41 active aggregations. We have another 12 in the approval process. And each one of those historically has saved their residents and businesses money.
Do you have any figures about a percentage or anything that you've seen in recent aggregations?
I can, I can get that information over to you. I'll send it to A.J.
Perfect. So I guess my other question is, Unitil will still be heavily involved as they'll be the distributor. Will their distribution rates be able to increase to compensate for losing the supply side? Is there any blowback that will affect the bill from, from changing the supplier?
Since deregulation in the late, the late 1990s, none of the utilities in Massachusetts have made money on the supply. So they're neutral on where the supply comes from. They only make money on the transmission, on the maintenance, and on the billing. So essentially, they don't care where the supply comes from, so there's not going to be any additional charge on the other side of the bill.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll just add simply, I think this is a no-brainer that we move forward with adopting the plan, you know, at the end of the day. Unfortunately, Unitil will continue to make money at the expense of the residents of the City of Pittsburgh, but we're providing an opportunity to, to lower the costs at the end of the day for, for ratepayers. And, you know, we, we know that's a huge obstacle for both our commercial and our residential. This is an opportunity to help, you know, working families who are struggling with their utility bills. Costs are going up everywhere else across the board, and this gives us one, one slight opportunity to give, you know, our families and our ratepayers an opportunity to, to reduce their costs at home. So in my mind, this is, this is wonderful due diligence by this administration, and I'm excited that this is before us and anxious to move forward. And also thankful to those residents, Mr. Keith Pendergrass, and, and Jaclyn Waite, who reached out as well in support of municipal aggregation. With that, we've exhausted the speakers list from councilors. Nope, I apologize, Councilor Boishman, speaking for the second time. Councilor, the floor is yours.
One quick question. Is the only thing you're going to supply is electricity? Because I was reading the book that the chief of staff gave me, and some of these companies were offering like gas too and the internet service on some of them. Not only were they handling electricity, but they were giving out gas. And according to the book that A.J. gave me way back when, are you going to be doing that too, or are you just going to be focusing on your electricity?
Just electricity.
All right.
With that said, next I have to ask, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? And, councilors, as I mentioned, in your packet, you have two, I won't read the entire transcript and email chain, but suffice it to say that Keith Pendergast and Jaclyn Waite voiced in favor of municipal aggregation, and, and they each provided additional commentary around that. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? There is no, no negative feedback that we got wishing to voice opposition to this. That said, if all have been heard, I now declare the hearing closed, and the matter is now before this body.
Motion to approve?
Second?
I have a motion and second to approve. Speaking on the motion, there is no objection. Madam Clerk, I believe we can do this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, we will adopt by unanimous consent. Thank you to Mr. Terigny, Mr. O'Rourke, and Ms. Delaney, our chief procurement officer, for their, their work, due diligence, and efforts on this.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you.
Thank you, A.J.
Thank you, A.J.
Next, we have orders, finance.
Move 18120 through 18920 to be sent to council as a whole.
Second?
I have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, is that council as a whole or a special meeting?
A special meeting.
Councilor Zarella?
I will move suspension of the rules on these items to send them to the special meeting rather than to their designated committee.
Yes. Thank you, councilor. I have a motion and second to send. Again, they were 181 up to and including 18820. Is that correct?
189.
18920, thank you, to their, to the special meeting of the city council. Speaking on the motion, if there are no objection, this will have to be done by roll-call vote because of suspension. Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you, President Kishmerich. This is a vote for the suspension of the rules, is that correct? Okay. Councilor Squallia?
Yay.
Councilor Van Hozenga?
Yes.
Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Councilor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kishmerich?
Yes.
Councilor Boishman?
Yay.
Councilor Kuchar?
Yes.
Councilor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Councilor Green?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
The items are now before this body to be referred to the special meeting of the city council.
So moved.
I have a motion and second, unless there is any objection, they will be sent to the special meeting of the city council. Seeing no objection, so moved. Next, we have, we have one item that stands referred to the Finance Committee. Councilor Dean Natale?
18120?
No.
Thank you.
No.
No, are we talking about 19020?
That's going to city property.
That's going to property.
Yeah, okay.
The petitions, I believe, we send them to respective committees.
Right, thank you, councilor.
Yeah.
19020 order, other order that authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to accept the donation of a certain property noted as the Dimick property located off Grimes Road in Hubbardston, Mass. is outlined in the enclosed order. That stands referred to the City Property Committee. Next, we have petitions, 191 up to and including 199. Those all stand referred to their respective committees, departments, and committees and departments. Unless there is any objection, those will be sent. Seeing no objection, they are indeed, and that concludes this evening's agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
And second to adjourn, unless there is any objection, we will adjourn by unanimous consent. Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, councilors.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, guys.